The Select Board Work Session in Person Meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. This meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping. Mr. Gant is in the back and is also asked for and received permission to record the meeting. The attendees of this meeting, a sign in sheet is being circulated. I assume that's for everyone who's out there who is nobody. The board asks that you please sign in to indicate your attendance at today's meeting. And with those extensive announcements out of the way, we can jump right into the fiscal 2024 budget calendar, which I suspect was finalized all about seven months ago.
A few extra minutes added in there, but we did, we worked on ensuring that we had a calendar that was very similar to last year. The budget calendar is our target. I know most of us come from this last year, but just what we do is we try to map out sort of our plan for the cycle season, which is really starts in September and ends at time meeting in May. There's ebbs and flows, there's periods where it ramps up, periods where it ramps a little bit down, but very similar to last year, dates have been changed, some small tweaks have been, and modifications coming off of last year within it. It's a target. Last year, there were certainly times where we were headed in certain areas and other areas where we found some capacity, if we want to spend a little more time on certain items to move something to another meeting. So it just gives us a roadmap moving forward over the next budget season. It has been reviewed by our town accountant as well as our town assessor. Our town clerk is not available this week, so when she gets back, I will verify a couple of the specific items later in the calendar, specifically dates that are mass general law mandated and periods of time things need to be posted to when they need to be delivered. So she's looking into that remotely and will, in the next few days, and then tomorrow or Friday should have confirmation from her on the clerk side. But other than that, this is pretty tight. The only other thing I would say is the FinCom meetings, they have not officially set up a schedule for the season. There's certain areas where I took liberties because typically they'll meet every week during a few months into the winter months, and so I put some assumptions. Anywhere you see a hold after the FinCom meeting is an assumption. Those will change. They sometimes have ad hoc meetings and sometimes they'll, their schedule they set up might look a little bit different, but it at least gives us a perspective of what we can expect.
I would just say you've come a long way, baby, because four years ago you had never done this before.
I was going to cut a lot up for sure, certainly, but this, it feels good to be able to make those tweaks as we progress to try to make a better product. And our system, I think our system and the budget process is very good, but there's always opportunity to get better and learn. And we do that every year and try to make it as streamlined as possible, but as thorough as possible at the same time.
Well, we're only on step number two, so you've already completed two. The second date on there is right now, so you're almost done.
I have two check marks.
Well, two check marks out of the two page document.
For anyone watching home, we're just reiterating too, the process, there's really three components to it. It's our capital, which is the first thing we lead with, our five year capital plan and looking at the next fiscal year, fiscal 24 in this case, what we anticipate using free cash or other funding mechanisms to allow us to invest in capital items. Second is then the budget itself, the omnibus budget as we refer to, which is all the different departments budget coming together, at which point, once we have that submitted to us before the end of December, we'll be submitting the first version to the Select Board and the FinCom right after the new year, at which time we'll be having a number of work sessions, three at this time, maybe a fourth if necessary, where we'll talk about the details within the budget, and then we'll go to a level two omnibus budget, which is then what the FinCom will really drill down on, because that will be the one that the board is comfortable with moving forward as well. All that said, the revenues are still being worked on throughout the whole process. So when we get through our level one, it's still not a balanced budget. We don't even know at that time what the schools are coming in at, but we'll certainly be very conscious, especially this year, with ensuring that we try to have a very thoughtful budget that considers some of the constraints we have fiscally this year, certainly, so.
So Kevin, is it roughly December? I can't find it on here, but when we start really getting aggressive with discussion on warrant articles, or is that November, December?
Well, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I started highlighting in all of these dates, trying to find the ones that really are notable to us. So I see November 7th distribute to Select Board and FinCom, the version one capital plan. Our meeting on the 5th of December, reviewing capital, to your question, on December 13th, distribute to us the list of potential warrant articles, so that'll be in front of us. On my 52nd birthday, by the way, what a wonderful present that will be. And then, once we get into January, January 6th, final capital plan, distribute level one budget. So I would say somewhere in there in January, we're starting to get, you know, a clearer idea of, that's when we're going to meet every day and a half, more or less, for two months.
I recall.
But, and that's as far as I got on the list before you asked your questions, so I don't have the dates.
So right now.
But I feel like that's when we, between the beginning of November and the beginning of January, is when we get the big picture idea.
So some of the articles will generate from our department heads, schools, and then others that we want to consider from the Select Board if there are any. So I'm encouraging department heads to start thinking about it even now, and they do during the year. I have a list on my wall of articles as we go that could be potential for an ATM. So there are certain things that I know the team's thinking through, but I would certainly ask the board even now if there's things that we should be paying attention to from a warrant article standpoint. We'll be in the coming months discussing it further, but it's never too early to plan.
I noticed for the September and October sessions here, you don't have the word "hold" after the FinCom meetings. Does that mean that you've got those wrapped up?
The first one on a week from yester, a week from Monday, so this coming Monday, 26, isn't for a meeting.
Okay.
The 10/24, I believe that's going to be their next meeting, but it's possible that it might be at a different date, so I probably should have put "hold" there, but I had an inclination that that might be the date, so.
That's good enough. Thank you.
So which ones of these are we supposed to be attending? Really, this is my first rodeo, so other than the Select Board meetings and work sessions, which really ramp up.
Any of them, or all of them?
I have found in my couple of years, I think I've attended maybe four FinCom meetings during budget season. If you do, please budget the entire night, because those suckers go really long. But by no means anyone other than, I think Kevin is attending all of them.
Catherine Gabriel is our liaison, because a lot of times what happens, and I do, I do try to make any and all I can, because a lot of times the FinCom meetings happen to fall or overlap with our regular scheduled Select Board meetings. We do have Catherine present for all, and then when I'm available, I attend all I can and provide the town's perspective on the budget or the warrant articles or capital.
Okay. And then can I ask another one? Where was it? Potential warrant articles get distributed to the Select Board on December 13th, and we have a next, the next day we have a work session to review that?
So, yeah, so in essence, I'll be collecting on Thursday, the 8th, the potential warrant article list, and it's a very rough list of articles. There's very little detail to it, it's just the start of a conversation that is typically generated or born from the department, sometimes it's something I might have picked up on as well, or something maybe even on planning that they identified for planning, zoning changes. And so it's received back on Thursday. I have the weekend, in essence, to pull that together and make sure the list is comprehensive from what we have at that time, and then it's provided to the Select Board the date for the work session, and then during the work session, we'll discuss that list as well as the capital plan. I'll be in the meeting for sure.
That meeting basically exists to review it. You needn't have reviewed it indepthly before that meeting. The purpose of that work session is to go over it.
I'll provide the detail more verbally on those before spending the time to really build those out as warrant articles. And then that's where sort of the conversation happens on whether it's something we want to pursue, keep on the list, or it's something we feel strongly it's not the time to consider doing.
But it's not a surprise that that's the first time we've seen that list lately.
Okay.
For your information, I will try to attend as many of the Finance Committee meetings as I can.
You're a stronger man than I, boy Jackson.
I'm not sure I'll stay for all of it.
Well, that's good. You can report back what you hear.
All right. Are we locked, excuse me, are we locked on the timing for everything right now? Not, not here. Six versus seven o'clock type thing, is that, we all decided that's how we want to do this through the end of May?
For the work sessions.
For the work sessions.
That was what was discussed, and I did get towards.
I mean, it's ultimately up to us.
I know, but is that what works? Is that still what works best for everybody?
Five, six, or seven make no difference to me.
I can't do five.
You can't do five? Okay. I was gonna, I was gonna ask if anyone could do five, but that's, that's fine.
Sorry.
Yes, it's fine.
I think six o'clock was the compromise between the two of you, basically.
Was it?
So. All right. Any other questions on the budget calendar? It looks good.
Well, there's a lot to think about.
Look forward to it. Fiscal 2023 Town Goals. This is what we worked on last time we were together in this room, and through the hard work of Kevin and Deb, I'm sure, we now have a clean version with some comments that came from us. I don't know that we need to necessarily review every bullet item unless somebody wants to. I assume you all have had a chance to look at it.
So now I would just add, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, so this is verbally what I received the feedback at the last meeting, and in addition to that, Mr. McDonald provided an email with some, both questions and some edits, which were incorporated in the orange on the document online. Hope being that at the next regular meeting of 26, this document is sufficient and for everyone that that can be voted on officially at the regular meeting for basic discussion. We've talked about it before, it's a basic discussion that I vote. I would just, the last version you have on there, the red line version incorporates all the changes that we, that everyone saw the last time, that I provided as well. Those verbs, those that were not provided with edits back to me, those were accepted changes, so. And I know, Mr. McDonald, there was a couple of questions in your, your response back relative to a couple of the line items, which I could certainly provide more details to you now or offline, but ahead of the next bullet itself, too.
Yeah, you'd have to remind me what those were, too, so.
That's funny. We can, we can take it offline.
Sure. All right, so the idea is to give this one last go over before Monday's meeting, when hopefully if there are no more changes or anything to it, we can vote and approve that. All right, so that brings us to the main purpose of our in-person meeting tonight, our annual review of Mr. Kevin Vertunian. Of course, everyone who works for the town undergoes an annual review, and we are following more or less the same format that they all do, whether good or bad for Kevin. He gets his review in a public meeting, recorded on camera for everyone to see, and has, well, not five of us, because Ms. Bubu is not here tonight, but four of us doing it right here in front of him. Of course, our review comes in the form of everyone in town getting to decide whether or not we need to keep this job. So, so the basic format of what we're doing tonight is I distributed to you all a form that was more of a roadmap for how to go through it. So it's going to be kind of a verbal review tonight, and then we'll figure out a date for you to submit to Deb your written review, and, and we'll take it from there. So I'd like to say we pulled names out of a hat. We did not, I just get to pick, so we will start with Mr. Brown.
Very good. Well, Kevin? I'm still, by the way, trying to get used to the five-on-one, four-on-one review thing, having been given reviews for 35 years to a number of people. Look, I'll start by saying about a year and a half into this role now, I have a far better understanding of your job and, and what goes into it, the roles and responsibilities of the town administrator. And, you know, I think it's a role that most people would find daunting and formidable. And I think you're a guy who wakes up every morning so excited to head in and take on this role. It's palpable. I think anyone who knows you, and I'm starting to get to know you, I think anyone who knows you knows, you know, you are sincere and you go for it with a gusto that's very hard to say. You know, adjectives can get goofy, but I started with a list of things that I think kind of personify you in this role, and then I decided I can't do that. I'm going to boil it down to four. So the four I'm going to give you, and they're going to really be the underpinning of everything I say, are enthusiasm, vision, innovative, and a creative approach to problem solving. That's not really an adjective, but you get where I'm going with it. Look, it's also no secret that I'm a fan of yours. I think that your work ethic is something that I look for in anybody, whether they work with me or next to me, or whether I just know them as a friend. I think work ethic matters, and I think yours is, you know, on a scale of one to five, is certainly a five. Your drive, your enthusiasm for what you do is just phenomenal. So I wanted to get, pull together five or six examples of things that really stood out to me in this year of interacting with you, and it's not that there weren't more, but these are the ones where I was involved with you and I saw you do your thing, and, and I think really personify the good job that you do. So in no particular order, I think the current effort you're making with Mr. Flunk, Peter Flunk, on the Village Shopping Center, you know, you cracked a nut, and I don't, I don't mean that in a derogatory way to him, I mean, you really made something happen where so many people have swung and missed in the past. I know nothing's a done deal, but you, you talked about your strategy, you talked about how you wanted to approach it, you talked about, with me, and I'm sure you did with everybody as well, but you said, hey, look, this is, this is what I'm thinking of doing. And it's obviously been effective, and based on the conversation you and I had today and maybe a week ago or two weeks ago as well, you are being effective with them. And, I mean, we should all stop and say, wow, I mean, that, that really is something pretty special. We don't know what the outcome's going to be, but, but kudos to you for, you know, getting it where it is. You have finessed this situation in a way that's proper, appropriate, and is working. So thank you for that, and I think that's a great one. The Perkins Row 40B situation, the meeting we had with Mr. Whalen, walking the grounds, and your ability at the time to listen, not judge, and not overpromise was, was great. I mean, it was, it was really spectacular, it was very mature, and something that, you know, I was really impressed with. I've never been in a meeting for an hour and a half and said less in my life. I mean, you had this one, and he was dialed in on you, and that was, that was really something. I also was very impressed with how you are and have been handling the Perkins Row Bridge situation. I know it's not a biggie, but in some ways, I think it's what this job is all about. You stood out there while people were, and held an open house on the bridge. I think you did it twice, but I remember one. Your chief hubby with you at one time, and I loved that. I thought that that was exactly what people driving their kids needed to see. I think you put yourself out there for any, any comments you were going to get, and that's what you always do. You've got broad shoulders, you know, you, you take your lumps and you do it like a gentleman and like a town administrator, which I love to see. Your partnership with both Chief Collins Brown and Chief Hubby is, in my mind, a very strong one and a very effective one. I think when we're negotiating contracts, talking about new employees, you, you guys have a great working dynamic. It's terrific to see, and it's so important. When I was running for office, Mr. Gant over there said, you know, the most important thing in this town is, is safety and making sure that we keep that as, remember that, Cam, just remember that's the most important thing. And I always look to the chiefs and your relationship with the chiefs, and I think that I understand that. And I understand that without you, you know, this would be a big challenge. Three quick ones. Energy around the community, skating parks, Thursdays on the Commons, softball game that I sure hope still happens, because I'm ready. You know, look, that's great for all of us. It's great for the vibe of the town, and it's great for the young people in town, it's great for all ages in the town, it truly is. I'm almost done, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, please.
I think what I've been observing at the old Highway Garage with Chris and the Route 7, Route 97 and Route 1 location, that, that process has been open. There hasn't been a whole lot of non-visual events happening, a lot of open houses of come here, talk, listen, comment. I've been in this town 27 years, I don't, I don't remember ever having discussions or hearing about discussions like this, and it gives me hope, and I think it plays into your vision for where you're trying to take the town. You want to, you want to take this town to a better place than it is, but you also want to preserve everything about Topsville that this town wants preserved, and you get that balance. I've never seen you miss on that balance, and I think that's really important. The final example I want to say is the Emerson Field 40B meetings and communication. If I had to come up with a summary of your approach, it'd be even keeled, and I guess that's who you are anyway, but I think you've done a tremendous job in the meeting we all attended two weeks ago, in the meeting the night before, two nights before, handling it very well. So look, I think that when we think about where the town wants to be or needs to go while maintaining its sense of who it is, you think about the right blend of innovation and appropriate technology, and that's really important to our future. When you talk about waste, when you talk about renewable energy, when you talk about reducing the town's carbon footprint, environmental outlay, you know, a lot of people, those are buzzwords. Man, it is you. You know, you look at it from my first day here talking about a green police cruiser to talking about, you know, solar benches and, and things that show, yeah, you want to be first, we get it, like, and that's nice, it's cool, it's cool. You want to be, you want to do that, but you're doing it for the right reasons. You know, you're not doing it for the sake of, of being first. So without a review, I mean, in a review, we also touched on development areas, and, you know, last year, I think we all went five for five, saying time management is something, you know, we've really got to pay attention to with you. And I've seen a market improvement in that, you know, I truly have, and I, I'm anxious to hear, eager to hear our colleagues here talk about that as well, but I've seen it get better, and I've seen you sort of, you have a different level of confidence this year. And it's, certainly it's experience, right? Because experience gives you confidence. But I, I think you're a little less frenetic. Is that all right?
No, that's exactly the word I was going to use.
Right? I mean, I really do, and, and that's a very positive thing, that's, that's positive growth right there. So the other thing I'd say is, when you are moving into a negotiation or a big subject matter like the Village Shopping Center or something, I think it's worthwhile to discuss your tactics and discuss what you're thinking about and how you want to get there. My guess is the two of you do a lot of that, and my guess is you probably still do a lot of that with Lynn, because you worked with her closely for a year or two. You know, I'd like to do more of that with you. I like negotiating and I like strategizing, and I think I could bring value on that. But regardless, I just hope that you're doing it with someone, you know, depending on what you think the strength you need support from is giving you. I don't know that, but I just assume that you are, if not, do more of it. It always makes you better going into a negotiation or going into any kind of potential conflict. So, look, you're the most motivated TA I could imagine. I think we're, I think we're very, very lucky to have you, and I think you do a remarkable job. I mean, if I had to give you a, am I supposed to give them a number, overall number?
Not now, we'll do that on the piece of paper.
I'm going to back into my number.
You could just make a number up. We don't even know what the scale is. It's 48.
Come on, one to five, right? I think you're, I think you're doing a remarkable job, and in many cases, you exceed expectations, which is, which is a hell of a cool place to be. And, you know, one of my, one of my favorite quotes from Coach McGinty, if you know who that is, it's a fictional character, but he's a good one, winners want the ball. And Kevin is the classic, give me the ball, I'm going to take this one and go with it. So that's what I got for you, Kevin.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You're welcome. Thank you. I hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Jackson.
Boy, that's, that's a pretty tough act to follow. I would, I haven't gone anywhere near the extent that you've gone into yet, but I've gone through the appraisal process, and I find it difficult not to put a five down for everything that's on that list. I have to go back through that again to make it look more realistic, because if I, if I put fives down for everything, people will say, well, you didn't do anything. Fact of the matter is, what I do all the time is tell people that having hired you was the best thing that we've done for the town of Topsville in 20 years, in my opinion. And most of the people that I talk to feel the same way. I'm, I'm talking to people that see you in operation, many of the things that Cam brought up regarding a particular issue, people have watched you, they, they're, they're paying attention to what you're doing, and I get feedback all the time about the fact that he really is good. I can tell you, we're all concerned about our ability to keep you, because I think that, I think you're going to be sought after one of these days, if not already, and that's going to be difficult for us to handle, and it's going to be disappointing, in my opinion. But having said that, as I said before, it's difficult for me not to put down a five on every one of those categories, but I've got to be a little more realistic about it, and one of the items that I will be talking about is the fact that I tell you all the time that you're running 90 miles an hour and you got to slow down a little bit because your plate is too full and you're going too fast, and you've gotten better at that, in my opinion. But when I tell you to slow down, you don't listen very well, because you haven't, you haven't done that yet. But you're one of those kind of guys, you're just not going to slow down, it's just the way it is, no matter how much I talk about it, okay? That's about all I can say at the moment. I'm pleased to have you here, and, and I'll come up with some sort of a rational rating system.
Mr. Jackson? I would just say one thing. With the amount of things that we're taking out and the speed that we're going at, it's only possible because of the team that we have, both our team at Select Board, but people like Debbie and others who are the people, a lot of times behind the scenes making it happen, and especially over the last four or five months, the number of projects we've had in our office, just want to acknowledge the work that Debbie's done, because the speed we're going at is not possible unless we have the infrastructure around us, behind us, in front of us to make it happen, so. Thanks, Debbie.
Well, one of the things you'll be grading on is the team development, and, and that's got to be pretty high, because you've got a pretty good team, and, and you're doing it with, I don't know if it's the right word, almost a skeleton crew at this point in time, because you've lost a couple of really good people, and, and you're, you and Debbie are doing it without them, so hats off to both of you, by principle.
Deb, if you want us to do your review in public in a public meeting, we can do that.
No, no.
We didn't figure this much out. Acknowledging that Rafael has been here the least amount of time of all of us, well, that's just the end of the set of time, acknowledging that, but I will now turn it over to you.
You were missing a noun, so it wasn't officially a sentence.
Well, an important phrase.
So I, I guess I took this document a little bit too literally, because I went through line by line and was thinking way too often to myself, well, I can't say whether you met expectations or exceeded them, because I don't really know what my expectations were coming into this job, quite honestly, but if I can, I guess, keep it a higher level. I've always been told, you know, no matter what role you're in, your job is to make your boss's job easier, and since we're giving you the review, I guess we could be, at least for now, well, I guess we aren't technically your boss. You've made my job easier in the sense that you are helping me understand, know what I don't know. You've made my job easier in the sense that you are helping me understand, know what I don't know, and telling me, you know, here's what you need to know, even though sometimes it's not apparent to me that I need to know that, but maybe it's a few weeks later. So I think the communication has been great. You've almost been like onboarding me during the last couple of months. And and I I needed that, because I don't know if anybody really knows what they're getting into unless they've already been in in the role. So you've made it easier. You've given every opportunity to communicate, to come, ask me questions. You're very open, I appreciate that. I wish I had more time to take more advantage of that, but I know that if I did, you would would take it on. I think the, on the the flip side of communication, the one thing, I don't know if we can do it, but if we could just get the agendas earlier, I know it's just, and I am learning still too. Like, we were talking earlier, like, okay, this is there, that doesn't mean you need to review it tonight. But I am looking at those things, and, you know, I'm making my efforts to get through every piece of documentation that I can. So if there's any possibility of getting stuff earlier, that would be helpful. And then effectively, that's it. You've made you've made my job easier. I can list several of the things that I have been involved in where things are going great as well. And I'd be hard pressed to identify things that aren't going great, with the caveat that I haven't been through a budget season yet, so maybe we'll we'll see.
It's fun processing.
Yeah.
I mean, fun's a word.
Fun is a word.
It's a word. It's a hard English word.
It's like building a piece of artwork at the end of the day.
But, you know, I wasn't involved before. You've been here longer than I've been on the board. I don't know what it was like before, but this to me is kind of, this is this is normal. And to hear the other board members express that this is this is not normal speaks estimates.
So I will warn you that I'm gonna be likely relentlessly positive. I could just skip to the bottom where I have areas of, what'd you call it? Areas of focus.
Development.
Development, that's that's the word I'm looking for. But, you know, if we look at the the form that we have, our headers, leadership and staff effectiveness, planning and organization, communication and community relations, problem solving, innovation, decision making, budget, financial management, service to residents, professional and organizational integrity. I I I would have a hard time finding a place where you didn't excel in every one of those. You look at the fire trucks. I know for the past few months of having assumed the chair position, and, you know, for people who may get that in the face, you you get to see a little more inside the the functioning of the machine, and all it's done to me is reveal even more so the effectiveness you're having, you know, inside this building. I I think that, you know, we may have a perception that everybody here loves each other, and it's, you know, walking through ravos and sunshine every day. I now realize that isn't a hundred percent true, but the fact that, A, we don't know that is a testament both in you're keeping that away from us in a good way. Like, this is not a problem that we need to deal with. But moreover, the fact that you are dealing with it, so it never becomes an issue that we need to know about. And that, to me, is a sign of being a good CEO of Town Hall, for for lack of a better term. I mean, you're effectively the CEO of this town, this company that we're running. And I think that the staff in this building sees that and respects that in a way that speaks to your leadership. Obviously, I have a particular affinity for communications, and I'm sure my colleagues and anyone who watches these meetings is probably tired of me talking about that. I will admit that I didn't believe that we could do what we've done communications-wise. I liked your optimism that we could. I wanted to believe in the optimism, but the fact that it's actually come to fruition and we're seeing the fruits of that labor of yours and Stephanie's and the planning that we put into that gives me tremendous joy and satisfaction. When it comes to community relations, if I walk around this town, I guarantee you more people know who you are than me by a long shot. And I've spent the last twenty years on radio and TV. But they know who you are, because you are out there all the time, talking to people. Your working groups that you put together, anytime there's some opportunity or issue or something that needs to be addressed, the fact that somebody can walk in the front door and they're immediately met with people who are gonna listen to them and do their best to problem solve, or in the case when people really don't have problems that can be solved, they're at least listened to, which oftentimes is all people are looking for. So that is another tremendous asset. I mean, budget, financial management, we're doing what we can, and I think we're doing a great job at it. And the professional and organizational integrity, it's all very good to me. Another admission, I had absolutely zero hopes at the success of the business showcase. I thought, oh, this will be a nice party, we'll get a free lunch out of it, but what does this really go to amount to? We're little Tops Field.
Great point.
I I didn't believe it, but there was no way I was gonna say, Kevin, you've got this great idea and this energy and this passion for it. It's not gonna work, so don't waste your time. I said, oh, hey, Kevin, go go do your business showcase, sure. I'm sure it'll be a nice day, and I'll get a free sandwich out of it. It was wildly successful, incredibly successful. You saw something there that I myself didn't see, and I'm happy that I kept my trap shut and let it go through, because now I'm excited to do it again, because it worked. And it really, you know, between the development opportunities we got out of it and the folks from the Chamber of Commerce local who were nearby, and just the people who already had businesses in town who came to it, I think it was a success at many different levels. Your dedication to the master plan, again, a thing that we met multiple obstacles on, people along the way who maybe didn't believe that we needed a master plan or didn't believe that it was worth the money. Clearly, we're just in its infancy technically. I don't think we've even begun the process, but we are now in position to begin the process, which in and of itself is an accomplishment. So I could go on with the relentlessly positive, I could. Areas of development, time management to to Cam's point, yes, you are much better at that. You are now doing meetings occasionally in your basement, which means you're actually home. And that, to me, is a good sign. I have seen you not at every single weekend event that we have, which I think is a good sign, and you even showed up in a T-shirt to one of them, so. Yeah, I mean, there was a jacket on top of the T-shirt, but I'm gonna ignore that.
He was good clubbing afterwards.
I was just gonna focus on the the T-shirt. I do desperately want to get into your email inbox and create rules with subcategories, so you can, you know, it's what I have in my email box at work. It's got this many categories, so for instance, when I get an email from the news director of the station, she has her own folder, and it pops up right there. There's an email from the boss's boss. I'm gonna make sure that I see that one, because I do think that, I mean, obviously, I get tons of emails, and you probably get ten times as many as I do. So I do fear that sometimes things get lost in there. Sometimes the shorter answer is the better answer.
Can I call around that just for a second?
Yes.
I think he's gotten much better at that, too.
Yeah.
And I do, I think I think we talked about that before, and I think he's learning brevity, okay?
There are times when you have you have answered the question, and then you keep talking for a while. Even if it's a yes or no question, sometimes it only means a yes or no answer without a whole description around it. And then the the other thing, which is more, I don't know what the word is, indistinct. I'm new to this town. I've lived here only slightly longer than you've town administrator here. And I think you and I are the same, that, I mean, you have a much bigger vision than I do, and that's good. That's why you have the job that you do and I have the job that I do. But I definitely want to make changes all the time right away. It has been a bit of a learning curve for me to understand that not everyone in this town is ready to move as fast as you and I and probably most of this board is. And sometimes we do need to take a breath and say, you know what? We just got our first EV Cruiser. It's not even been here a year. Maybe we do wait a year before we ask for another, even though technically we didn't ask for another, but you get my point. That's just an example of maybe there are times when we need people to just get used to a little bit of the idea before we jump in and double down on it or move forward on it. And again, that is as much an area of development for me, and I think probably this entire board, as it is for you. So maybe that's what we all need to focus on, because there are, you know, people who've lived in this town exponentially longer than I have. And I am not, despite what some people may say, nearly arrogant enough to believe that everything I think is the right thing. So I'm now basically talking about myself.
I was actually trying to get your attention.
But so that's that's just an area that I think we all, you and I both need to focus on, is no way maybe we are moving too fast. And that's what I got.
I just got to second the visibility thing. Sorry, because it's well founded, but he's exactly right, and I had it on my list. Everyone in town knows you or recognizes you or, you know, knows that's the town administrator over there. I mean, your vis- the visibility is is really powerful, and I think it I think it helps in many, many ways. But, I mean, the ten times in the last six months that I've come in here, eight times, whatever, that I've come in here, you've always left, walked down the street. I think I've offered you a ride half the time, knowing damn well what you're gonna say. No, you should be walking into town and not getting dropped off, so I, kudos to you on that, too. You could get that round of applause going again.
Yeah, you can. Mm, thanks. So that's what we have for you. You got anything for us?
I just am very thankful for the opportunity I was given a little over two and a half years ago to serve this community. Came from a community that I grew up in, in Beverly. I mean, I knew very well people I was surrounded by, who I made close connections with, other people I known for even before my time there. And I came to a place that I didn't have those connections. And echoing a lot of the comments about being visible, being present, that was something that was, when I took the opportunity, I said, I'm gonna be fully committed to Topsville, you know, to be there. Just go for it. And I appreciate the feedback that people in this community are aware of what we're doing, or me, which is very purposeful, right? And ultimately, I think a lot of the vision we came in with and the team we've built and the support we received have allowed us to do some really tremendous things. I do have a network of town administrators, and I see other communities. And sometimes you leverage, you ask questions to them, but sometimes you just kind of say, what's going on in that community? I look at the great things that we're working on, and not just where we're going, the world that Lynn ended up, but how we got there is just as important in my mind. And so the positivity that we have and the work we're doing is is, makes me very excited to come and work every day. As I say, it's surrounding yourself with good people, do interesting things. And I'm so thankful and grateful that I've had that opportunity and I continue to have that opportunity here at Topsville. I'm excited for the years to come, because we have a lot of great things ahead of us that have planted the seeds, and we're starting to see a little bit of it growing. But there's still a lot of great work that Deliberate Services community deserves and support the initiatives that the board outlines in our goals and really enhance this community, not just today, but for the future. So thank you for this opportunity and the support. That that support is literally everything. It allows us to do some really amazing things, and thank you.
So I don't have a date yet for submission of these, I'll call them written forms. It'll be at least a couple of weeks. So you'll have plenty of time to fill it in and massage your scores and all of that, and then we'll submit them to, yeah, we'll get to do the math and the editing to boil that all down. In fact, what'll probably let happen is Deb pick the date for that, so she can.
Whenever you're ready.
So we'll find it.
So so what what is the idea? Is that we're going on, the score is not on the eighty-four different ones, but just the ones on this summary page on ten? Or is the intention that we have a score for every single thing?
No, I think that you, so let's look at the first one, leadership, staff effectiveness. There are five different things there, right? A, B, C, D, E. You can put comments in there, and then, I mean, it's at some level up to you. You can either grade them each on your own or just give it one grade at the end. Because in the end, your grade at the end is an average of ones above, so it's really your own method of how you want to do it. We don't need numbers for every letter. We just need a summary number at the bottom. So however you get it.
There was something last year about, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was something where you've you've been here for, you know, a shorter amount of time, therefore you don't know.
You can fill in only that which you're comfortable.
Right, but that's gonna impact, remember, we get, you have to weigh it and all that stuff. So that's what I was gonna say, is you can say an A, but you'll get an O.
So if there's an organ, if there's a place where you feel like you can tackle all five, then tackle all five, if there's one, or whatever the number is. If there's one where you can't, then you, you, my friend, have the freedom to just fix it out and say, I'll catch you next year.
I abstain. And then the prior year goal assessment, we also do on page ten?
Yeah, way there at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yep. And again, that will be up to you, whether you decide you know enough to do it. Any other questions? I will tell you, if you told me that we were gonna knock out this meeting in under an hour, I would have been absolutely shocked at the notion of that. But yet, here we are. So with that.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded. All in favor? Aye, I'm gonna raise my hand whether you want to or not. Aye. Opposed? None? We are adjourned.
By the way, I'll just give you one little story you may not know about.